All to order, City Forest Park Council Meeting Number 1249, April 20, 2015. Let's stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, which is the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk call to roll, please.
Here.
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 Hope.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Lives.
Here.
Southall.
Here.
All members are present. The second item, number two on the agenda, is minutes. You would have received the minutes in your packets. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? There being none, minutes will stand approved as presented. Item number three is presentations. Item A on the presentation is Presentation of Business of the Month. Mr. Paul Brown.
I want to thank the mayor for bringing this company to our attention. It's one that we all know and love here in the community. For over five decades, George and Lisa Pavlosky have been running the Forest Park Restaurant over on Northland Boulevard. I think all of us know the restaurant and know what a wonderful place it is. It's truly like stepping back in time when you walk into the place. And it's not just the decor, it's the generous service that you receive and the great food, homemade desserts, a little bit of everything's on that menu. But I think what's really made the Forest Park Restaurant such an institution over the years has been George and Lisa and their dedication to the community. It's a true gathering spot in the community to this day. What a lot of people don't realize is George was not actually the first owner. He actually started working at the restaurant in '71 and bought the restaurant in '85. But ever since, I mean, it's just been a joy to go into the place. Even when I was not in Forest Park, I always used to come back and see George and Lisa. So they're just wonderful people. Unfortunately, they couldn't be with us tonight. They're working. So I will make sure that George and Lisa get this. As many of you may have known, George actually had some knee surgery recently, so he's not getting around as well. But I'll make sure that they get the award and receive our praise. For 50 years in business, they're celebrating this year. So not many places, not many people celebrate 50th anniversaries, if anything. It's amazing that they're still over there and still working as hard as ever, so I'll make sure that they receive the award.
Please sit. Thank you, Paul. I'll stay here. The next item on the agenda, item B, for the 25th Anniversary, plaque for the least Lieutenant Jim Ward. Would you come forward, Chief? Ms. Lives.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
What I have here is the proclamation, and he said to shorten this, but I can't. It's on several pages of things that you've done. So bear with me, I'll read this to everybody. James W. Ward served as a volunteer auxiliary police officer from 1988 to 1990. James Ward became a full-time police officer on April 2nd, 1990, and attended the basic police training course. Officer Ward, while serving as a patrol officer, dedicated a large amount of his personal time and money to the area of police training, becoming considered a training expert. Now, Police Officer James Ward became a field training officer for new police officers and a training officer for the Ohio Police Peace Officer Training Academy. Officer James Ward served as field training officer, in-service training instructor, technical auto-crash investigator, and officer in charge while maintaining his patrol duties. Officer Ward was appointed to detective, where he continued to distinguish himself as a dedicated and steadfast professional. James Ward was promoted to sergeant, 2007, and served as commander of several patrol teams and served as department training sergeant. James Ward, while serving as treason sergeant, attended the prestigious Force Science Institute, adding to his already impressive credentials. James Ward was promoted to lieutenant, 2014, and attended the Certified Law Enforcement Executives Course, and now serves as commander of Staff Services Division. Therefore, it is fitting and proper that James W. Ward be recognized for 25 years of outstanding service and to the residents of Forest Park. Now, therefore, Mayor Charles Johnson do proclaim April 2nd, 2015, as James Ward Day. And it's signed by our mayor. So thank you very much for your service. Thank you. Thank you.
(applause).
Great. Thank you.
We have a plaque also. Forest Park City Council recognizes Jim Ward for 25 years of outstanding dedication and loyal service to the city of Forest Park, 1990 to 2015. Congratulations, sir, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Do you have a few words for us, please?
Thank you for all the neat gifts. My father was a policeman in Los Angeles, and when I first became a policeman, I asked him, I said, "Dad, why do you want to do, why do you do what you do?" And he said, "Son, I like the feeling that I get when I'm at some little old lady's house at four in the morning and she's frightened, and I can say to her, 'You'll be okay,' because I'm there." I worked for an agency that truly believes that, and I would dare say that this agency is probably one of the best in the nation. When you look around and you see all the different problems that everybody has on a regular basis, if you go back in history, you find that we just don't have those. I also believe that while police departments and police personnel help mold the community, the community does the same thing. So in 25 years that I've had the opportunity to work with many, many people in the city, I've also been a student from the citizens. And so I believe that I'm part of them, and that we're all part of them, and that by working together, we'll make it work. I'm humbled, and I'm indeed grateful that I will have started my career here, and I will end it here. And thank you.
Over the years, as I've been chief, the confidence and the trust that this council, the mayor, and the city manager has shown in this police department has been evident. And you've heard me stand in front of you many times here, and I've talked about the standards that we set and the goals that we set as a police department, and being one of the premier police departments, not only in this region, but anyplace around us. And those standards and those things that we try to put in place to keep our police officers a little bit better than maybe the next one is a result of this gentleman right here. He has done a lot of that through his training and the things that he's done over the years, the training, the standards he's put in place. We are well above and beyond a lot of police departments in this region as far as training and the things that we know we should do and think about when we're out there in the field, when they're out there in the field. And a lot of that credit goes to this man right here. He sets that trust, and he sets that confidence that the citizens have in our police department by his actions and the things that he does. So being a resident of this city also and being in this police department as long as I've had, I've had, I've done, something I've done ahead or something like that.[533.41][533.41](laughter). It's been a long time, but I'm very, very honored to have men like Jim Ward to be the go-to and say, "Hey, I need this done, and let's get it done right, and let's keep the standards that we believe in and we should be at." And he gets it done. So I appreciate that very much. On behalf of the police department and your fellow officers here tonight, Jim, I congratulate you on your 25 years, and well done, very nice job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.[562.16][562.16](applause).
Comment from council? Mr. Burns?
Jim, I just wanted to echo a lot of things that's been said. For 25 years, and when you really think about it, it's been 30-some years. When you think about the dedication that you've had and the work that you've done for the city, that's a very rare, rare feat. There are people who don't see five, don't see 10, and to be able to see the evolution of a city or a workplace, you have a great perspective and a huge opportunity to share, which is exactly what you do on a daily basis. So I just want to congratulate you and hope you can see fit to continue to do what you do, because you are a great blessing to the men that work with you. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Councilman Cottle?
Lieutenant, I'm sure there's balloons and all things going up all over Forest Park tonight, as I told you, and that'll be the party. But thank you so much for what you do and your caring attitude. It's really appreciated.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hope?
I just want to say congratulations on your 25 years, and maybe somebody else will be here 25 years from now congratulating you on 50.[653.54][653.54](laughter).
Anyone else? Councilman Lives?
I just wanted to comment that everything I could say to state your career was stated in that proclamation, and I think we're proud and happy to have officers such as you and your brother officers and sisters that exemplify Forest Park. Thank you again for all your service.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Herbie?
I also want to congratulate you, and I'm glad that Chief Cannon spoke to your role in training, because we have always said that we have one of, not one of, but the best police force in the country and around the world, probably. And that's a credit to the leadership, like Phil and the others who've come before him, but it's a credit also to the training officers, and I'm glad he spoke to that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, we're very proud to have you here, and Forest Park is better with your actions and all the training that you have that exemplifies the things that Forest Park needs here. And again, thank you for 25 years.
Thank you.
Lieutenant Ward, thank you very much for your service and the time that you've given to the citizens of Forest Park. You've made us safer, you've made us better. We're very proud of you, as we are all of our police officers. I think, you know, I try every day to in some way say to one or more of you guys, Forest Park wouldn't be what it is without you. Unfortunately, a week or so ago, I attended a solemn occasion for one of our former police officers. But even from that, just looking at the close knitness that was there among not only police officers of other places, but especially from you guys, makes us special, and it makes you special. And we're very, very grateful to all of you and to you, Lieutenant Ward, for, as Councilwoman Herbie said, the time that you spend, your own time, in training others to make sure that this tradition continues. Again, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.[801.44][801.44](applause).
This time, we have a motion to amend the agenda. Councilman Lives?
I move to amend the agenda and take up at this time, item B, under New Business, a motion to appoint a candidate to a board or commission, requiring a roll call vote.
Second. The move, in second, that we amend the agenda to take up item B on the agenda for the point, for an appointment. Is there any discussion? Here now, with the clerk call to roll under motion.
Burns?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lives?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Motion to amend the agenda passes 7-0. This time, we take up item B. Is there a motion? Councilwoman Hope?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to appoint Mrs. Beverly Moore to the Beautification Commission for a term expiring 11/30/2015.
Second. The move, in second, that we appoint Mrs. Beverly Moore to the Beautification Conservation Committee, Commission for a term expiring 11/30/15. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to say, welcome back, Mrs. Moore, and thank you for coming back and serving on the Beautification Committee, which I am the liaison for. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
No.
There being none, all those in favor of the motion to appoint, let it be known by the sign of voting, aye?
Aye.
Oh, Lord. Ward's appointment, Lord. Come forward, please.
Thank you.
Would you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, and state your name.
I, Beverly Moore.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Ohio.
Of the State of Ohio.
The Charter.
The Charter.
Of the municipality.
Of the municipality.
Of Forest Park, Ohio.
Of Forest Park, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
As a member of the Beautification Commission.
As a member of the Beautification Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to have a word, please?
Oh, just want to say, thank you, I'm glad to be back.
And this is for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[962.82][962.82](applause).
Okay, this is a time where we will go into communications from the public, but before we do that, this is also the time that our audience generally will take leave, so if you're welcome to stay, but if you feel that you want to leave, please feel free to do that. And thank you all for coming. This is a time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to five minutes. Seeing that we have no members of the public, we will move to item number five, standing committees. The first of those being Public Safety Committee, Councilman Lives.
Thank you, ma'am. Just a couple items, again, highlighting from the departmental reports. The Fire Department did training on the new COT system to load folks into the ambulances, and it was successful, and hopefully will save a lot of back and strain injuries. So they did complete that training. Also, in the Police Division, the Staff Services had an interesting situation with the high school on spring break. The building was empty, so our police force, in addition to some other individuals, as well as Green Hills, participated in an active shooter program in the actual high school grounds, which was an opportunity to do that while the school was empty. Also, I did want to comment that I wanted to express my condolences to George Brooks' family, also his professional family, the police department. It should be pointed out that Lieutenant James Ward and Police Chief Cannon spent a great deal of time in organizing and planning the funeral for our fallen retired police officer, George Brooks, and want to thank them for their services. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Councilman Lives? Councilman Lives, I have no items on the agenda for the work session for the 27th. Do you have any to add?
No, sir.
The next committee reporter is Ways and Means Committee, Councilwoman Herbie.
No committee report, but I do want to again remind our residents that the Emeritus Forest Park Community Day was moved from May 2nd to Saturday, May 16th, from 2:30 to 5:30 at our Central Park, and there will be live entertainment and food and Cincinnati Zoo's Wings of Wonder. There'll be some local teen mascots, children's activities, and a classic car show. So I would urge people to come out and enjoy themselves that day. Thank you.
Any questions for Councilwoman Herbie? There being none, Councilwoman Herbie, I have no items for you. Do you have any to add?
Yes, sir.
Next reporter is Community Development, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to point out a few things related to the community development and regarding one of the homes we talked about a couple months ago on Exmoor. That home was sold and subsequently refurbished and redeveloped, and proud to say, a new family has moved in to that facility or to that building. That's just one of those examples of where the city purchased the home and was able to resell that home, get it refurbished. There are two other properties on Harkin that are undergoing the same redevelopment by independent developer, and we hope to see those homes actually being sold as well. And with that, if there's any questions, be glad to answer. And with that, that would complete my report.
Any questions for Mr. Burns? Mr. Burns, I have one item on the agenda for you, this zoning classification for churches and daycares for the work session. Do you have any to add?
No, thank you.
Next committee is Law Committee, Councilwoman Cottle.
I have no report this evening, thanks.
Councilwoman Cottle, I have no items on the agenda for you. Do you have any to add?
No, thank you.
Next reporter is Human Resources Committee, Councilwoman Hope.
I do not have a human resource report tonight, but as part of the Beautification Commission, Arbor Day is this coming Friday at 11 o'clock. If you would like to help us plant a tree, meet us at 11 o'clock on the corner of Sharon and Wenton Road, and that is this Friday, April 24th, 11 o'clock. That will conclude my report. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Hope, I have no items on the agenda for you. Do you have any to add?
No, I do not, thanks.
Before we go to the next reporter, Councilwoman Cottle, just had a question for you. May I have that information? I believe Lieutenant Hill from the Fire Department is, they having some program on the 22nd here?
Yes, it's, we thrive, and the report has come in from Hamilton County with recommendations and things that, areas that we can improve and work on as a community and as a council. And that is coming up, and residents will be invited, Forest Park Chamber of Commerce and other businesses will be invited. Of course, council is welcome to come participate as well.
And I believe that is this coming Wednesday here in chambers at 2 o'clock, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next committee report, Public Improvement and Facilities, Councilman Southall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have a report tonight for public improvement and facilities, but I'll.
Okay, any questions for Councilman Southall? There being none, Councilman Southall, I have one item on the agenda for the work session for you, and that's assault bids. Do you have any others to add?
No, I do not at this time, sir.
Okay, next report is Intergovernmental Relations Communications Committee Report. It's my committee, I have no report. I will be happy to answer any questions if there are any. There being none, I have no items on the agenda thus far for the work session on the 27th. Moving into item number six, the mayor's report. I just want to again reiterate what Councilman Lives said. I want to thank all those who attended and participated in the services for retired officer Brooks. I want to thank those members of the police department and the staff here in City Hall who assisted his family, specifically his son, in the arrangements and programming for that event. Again, thank you all, and condolences again to his family. That will complete my report. I'll answer any questions if there are any. There being none, item number seven is the city manager's report, Mr. Hodges.
Thank you. Our first report that the departmental reports were completed, included in the council packet, and also made available to the general public with the clerk of council. I'll also point out that our finance director is still out, and we don't have a lot of details, but she may be out until the end of May at this point with some of her medical treatment that she's going through. Many of you are aware that we have initiated the major road improvement for Northland Boulevard. That work is underway, it'll go on for the, basically, the entire year. We're glad to see that that work has commenced. We've also started the chipper program, in case anyone is asking. There is a schedule of pickups and chipping that is on the website also, but we have the schedule laid out for the entire season. And finally, I'll report that I did attend the Tree City USA with the Beautification in Tree City Committee here at the city, it was actually held in Wyoming, but we had a good time there, we were well represented, and our program is continuing to work and be well recognized in the state. So that would conclude my report, but I would respond to any questions if they are any.
Any questions for Mr. Hodges? There being none, thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is item number eight, other reports, the first of those being the law director, Mr. Wyckoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening I have no report, but would answer any questions.
Any questions for the law director? There being none, thank you, sir. Next report on the others would be clerk of council, Mr. Hoffman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that resolution numbers 13 through 15, that's 2015, were posted as required, and that concludes my report.
Any questions for clerk of council? There being none, thank you very much. Move to article nine, new business. First item on the new business is a resolution, resolution number 16-2015. Would the clerk please read that resolution in full?
Resolution number 16-2015, amending resolution number 24-2014, accepting the bid of Atleta Incorporated for the 2014 street program. Whereas, resolution number 24-2014 passed on August 4th, 2014, awarded a contract in the amount of $291,149.35 to Atleta Incorporated for the 2014 street program. And whereas, in order to perform additional spot curb repairs, 667 feet, which is needed on Southland, it is necessary to amend resolution number 24-2014 to have the contract reflect additional dollar amounts to cover the additional needed street repairs. And whereas, it is in the best interest of the city of Forest Park to proceed with said additional needed road repairs without further formal bidding by taking advantage of the lowest and best bid already provided by Atleta, based on unit prices and overall total contract amount and said additional work to be performed, and is based on unit prices already determined through the formal competitive bidding process to be the best, lowest price available. Now, therefore, be resolved by the council of the city of Forest Park, Ohio, Section One, that resolution number 24-2014 is hereby amended in the amount of $28,500 to include an additional 667 feet of spot curb repair on Southland, a total amended contract amount of $319,649.35 with Atleta Incorporated. Section Two, that the city manager is hereby authorized and directed to execute the amended contract with Atleta as detailed in Section One of this resolution. Section Three, this resolution shall be in full force and take effect on April 20th, 2015.
Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution number 16-2015 be received or adoption.
Second?
The move, in second, that we adopt resolution 16-2015. Is there a discussion, Mr. Southall?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Staff recommends that the approval of this resolution, which basically proposes to extend the work already authorized for our 2014 street improvement program, that includes improvement of curbs on the Southland from Rose Lane to Northland on a par-unit basis, which is approximately 67, 67 feet of curb improvement. Already gone through full process of competitive bidding for 214 street improvement program, determined that the best and lowest-priced work was submitted by Atleta Incorporated for a amount of $2,000. for an amount of $2,901.49. In fact, we awarded the contract last year with the anticipation that it would start around October. However, it got so late in the year, the contractor wasn't able to start, so we know that the winters came upon us and was delayed in the 2014 work process. Now, that the program has begun, it's far more cost-effective to include Southland Curb Project for 2014 Improvement Program, especially since the contractor's already in town and the crew and the equipment is available. Since we have the unit price of 2014 Street Improvement Program, we'll also rather simplify a matter for us to extend the quantities of improvement without further negotiations. And the staff recommend that we simply amend the Atleta contract to include the Southland Curb Project, an estimated cost of $28,500, resulting in a revised total of $319,649 for the 2014 Street Project. With that, Mr. Mayor, I urge the adoption of Resolution Number 16-215.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, with the clerk call and roll on Resolution 16-2015.
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lives?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Resolution 16-2015 passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda is a motion, Councilwoman Herbie.
Yes, I would move to receive the General Fund Summary Report contained in the departmental reports.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we receive the General Fund Summary Report as contained in the departmental reports. Is there any discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting aye.
Aye.
Most, motion carries. Any other bids to come before the body? Any other bids to come before the body? Hearing none, we adjourn.